Called order of regular city council meeting for Tuesday, September 3rd, 2019. Would everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, welcome. Uh, roll call, Sylvia?
Mayor Mays?
Here.
Counsel President Rosner?
Here.
Counsel Brous?
Here.
Counsel Garland?
Here.
Counsel Young?
Here.
Counsel Griffin?
Here.
Counsel Scott?
I am here.
Thank you, Sylvia. Uh, we have approval of agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
All in favor of approving the agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda, three items on our consent agenda this evening. Item A, approval of the August 20th, 2019 city council meeting minutes. Item B, resolution 2019-070, appointing Ava Bowie to the Sherwood Cultural Arts Commission. Resolution 2019-071, appointing Casey Chen to the Sherwood Cultural Arts Commission.
I move consent.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor of approving the consent, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you counsel. Citizen comments? Time to address counsel on a topic not coming up? Do I have any forms, no sheets? Alright, we will move on to presentations. We have two proclamations. Um, I heard there's someone here for Constitution Week? Hi there. Um, welcome. Um, um, want to declare Constitution Week, September 17th to the 23rd, 2019. Um, our founding fathers, in order to secure the blessing of liberty for themselves and their prosperity, did ordain and establish the Constitution of the United States of America. There's more to it, but, um, consti- uh, thank you for being here and helping us celebrate Constitution Week, um, next week. Second proclamation, national preparedness month. Uh, proclamation to declare September 1st to 7th, 2019, as Home Inventory Week. It is, the month of September is recognized as National Preparedness Month, and as Oregonians, we have witnessed and experienced natural disasters in our community. Every community member should take active steps to protect their families and neighbors from natural and man-made disasters. So, be ready, because the big one, they say is gonna happen, um, and a lot of little ones happen along the way as well. So that's the two presentations. Next is public hearing. We have one public hearing this evening, and Sylvia, would you like to read?
The Sherwood City Council will hold a public hearing this evening to hear testimony on ordinance 2019-010 regarding a zone change application for Washington County map and tax lot number 2S1314BA2000. The public hearing this evening will be conducted as follows. Staff will present a staff report, questions if any by the city council for staff. We will receive any written testimony. We will then open the public hearing for testimony, and the time will be limited as follows. The applicant will receive 30 minutes, split between presentation and rebuttal. Persons in favor of the application, four minutes each. Persons opposed to the application, four minutes each. Rebuttal from the applicant, remainder of the 30 minutes. We will then close the public hearing, no other comments will be heard from the public or the applicant. Final comments by staff, questions of staff, if any by the council, discussion by the council. This is the first hearing before the city council on this application and ordinance. Generally, the council will hold two hearings prior to making a decision. A second hearing on this application is currently scheduled for October the 1st. However, in accordance with the city charter, the council reserves the right to make a decision at the close of this hearing by unanimous vote of all sitting council members. If you wish to speak, please fill out the testimony form and submit it to the city recorder. The mayor will recognize people wishing to speak, and any questions should be addressed through the mayor. When you come forward, please state your name and address for the record, as this hearing will be recorded. In reaching a decision on the application, the council must consider whether the application meets the relevant approval criteria in the city's land use regulations and any other applicable law. Those criteria are identified in the staff report. The testimony and evidence must address these criteria or other criteria you believe to apply to the decision. Please note, failure to raise an issue with enough detail to enable the council, the applicant, and the parties in an opportunity to respond to any of the issues precludes an appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals on that issue. Also, failure by the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues regarding proposed conditions of approval with enough detail to allow the council the opportunity to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. At this time, I would like to ask the members of the council to disclose any ex parte contact, bias, or conflict of interest. Please indicate the nature and extent of the ex parte contact, bias, or conflict of interest, and indicate whether you intend to participate or to abstain from the hearing. Does any members of the council wish to challenge, or excuse me, does any member at the conclusion of your, um, comments, any member of the audience can challenge counsel?
When the larger application was before the planning commission, Gene from the planning commission called me, and essentially asked if the city council had any conversation about doing text amendments for, um, the code, um, comp plan got all done, and I said, "We haven't had a conversation, we haven't talked about it." So that was the extent of that conversation. And then, Mark Cottle, um, we chatted and it didn't, it was, it was about this, but it was just, it was a very generic chat about, um, did you know that there was, I think, one parcel was split zoned, and he goes, "How did that happen?" I said, "I don't know how that happened." I think that was the extent of that part, but it was very generic. And I do intend to vote and participate.
I, I just have a couple quick things. Um, God, it's been a couple months now, but I was approached by the applicant in the parking lot after a regular meeting, um, but we were, the conversation did not include what we're going to talk about tonight, um, but out of an abundance of caution, I thought I'd mention that we did have that contact. I mean, uh, just to the conversations was more about the frontage road and O'Donnell's position on that. Um, in addition, um, when I met with Joe, I think it was last week, Joe, when we met, and there was a change to the application, what was going to be presented tonight, I asked staff to send another letter out to all of the people that have been previously notified about that change, and I briefly, uh, had a chat with the mayor about the intent to do that, and, uh, Counsel Young.
I, as a liaison to the planning commission, obviously, I sat through the original round of applications, I don't think I need to declare that, but I wanted to mention it anyway. Additionally, I did have one conversation after those hearings with Commissioner Kai about the, um, the text, the code text amendment changes, which are not party of this, which are no longer part of this application, but we did have a conversation about, about our thoughts around what were those legislative changes, uh, what we thought about them, but...
Great.
I got one. I have known the clauses and been friends and friendly with the clauses for 20 years, a long, 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 long time, but I intend to vote, that will not affect my vote tonight whatsoever.
After this was, um, in front of the planning commission, I had a brief conversation with Commissioner Home just about the complexity of this issue, but nothing in detail, just, um, how the two tech, you know, the text amendments, and it just was a, a unique case that we didn't talk about. I had watched the planning commission meetings online, um, when they were happening, and that's what, I said, "Wow, that was kind of a complex situation."
And Sylvia, I forgot to mention, I do plan on participating.
Same with me.
Me as well.
Alright, Mayor, there's no other, um, comments from the council. Um, does any member of the audience wish to challenge any of the council's, um, ability to participate in this hearing?
Thanks Sylvia. Erica?
So, good evening, Mayor and council. Tonight, you will be hearing a request for a map amendment to the Sherwood zoning map. So, the proposal that you have before you. The applicant is proposing to rezone 2.66 acres of a 5.91 acre site from medium density residential high to general commercial. Um, the applicant has requ- has withdrawn requests for two text amendments to the Sherwood Community Development Code and a planned unit development subdivision that were originally part of this application. The entire 5.91 acre parcel is outlined in red on the screen. It's, um, it was zoned general commercial up into the year 2016. It was in 2016 that the applicant requested that the 2.66 acres be rezoned to medium density residential high, and this request was approved by council ordinance 2016-016. The 2.66 acres has remained undeveloped since the zone change in 2016, and the applicant is requesting to revert back to the original zoning, um, which was the general commercial. Um, and the general commercial zoning was consistent with the comprehensive plan and all applicable city criteria prior to the adoption of the zone change amendment in 2016 to medium density residential high. So, the applicant is requesting this rezone for the, for the following reasons. After additional technical considerations, um, the 2.66 acres has been found to be too small for the development of the property, given the feature extension of Cedar Brookway. And also, um, rezoning the parcel to one single zoning designation alleviates any, um, area of concern that there would be a portion of the property zoned medium density residential high that would become undevelopable due to the future alignment of the road of Cedar So, as I stated previously, the entire site is comprised of 5.91 acres. The subject site is located southwest of Minneke Road, south of the Windham subdivision, and north of Highway 99. The site is currently split zoned. The area in red is the portion of the site proposed to be rezoned from medium density residential high to general commercial. Um, the area outlined in blue is currently zoned general commercial. The subject site has an existing single-family residence and several outbuildings, um, that have been used for a variety of uses over the years. So, this slide before you shows the existing split zone parcel, and the image to the right is the proposed new zoning that would revert back to, um, general commercial for the entire Alright, so the required findings for a zone map amendment within the Sherwood Community Development Code. Um, the zoning code outlines five required findings that must be made to amend the city's, um, zoning map. Um, first, there must be a demonstrated need for the proposed zoning. Um, the proposed amendment needs to be timely, and other zone properties are unavailable or unsuitable for immediate developments. Um, the amendment, um, does not significantly affect the functional classification of a local county or transportation facility. And finally, the proposed amendment, um, needs to be consistent with the city's comprehensive plan and other state and regional standards. So, I'm gonna talk about the need and timeliness of this proposed amendment. So, the applicant, um, is proposing to rezone the 2.66 acres to medium density residential high, and, um, this site has remained vacant since 2016, since the time it reverted to general, since the time it became general commercial. So, the most recent economic opportunities analysis states that there is a 57 acre deficit of land for commercial and retail uses here in Sherwood. And it should be noted that, um, the EOA has not yet been adopted by council, but it is a hearings-ready document. So, during the next 20 years, the city will need to identify opportunities to address the commercial retail land deficit through policies that encourage infill or redevelopment, or through redesignating land to commercial uses. The next criteria, criterion indicates, um, a finding that other general commercial properties are unavailable or unsuitable for development. Um, there is a demonstrated lack of commercially zoned land within the city to meet the projected needs within the 20-year planning horizon, um, as presented by the EOA. And other similar zone land does not appear to be available on the market, or these parcels have challenges related to service. So, the map on your screen here shows the, um, the general commercial, um, office commercial and retail commercial lands. Um, so vacant lands that are zoned for commercial uses are to the southwest of the subject site along Highway 99, kind of just southwest of where the star is that indicates the property on the screen. Um, there are light orange, um, parcels designated, um, those are zoned office commercial, and those are primarily on the south side of Highway 99. And then there are some vacant parcels on the northeast side of Highway 99 at Roy Rogers'. Um, but these parcels, um, have significant constraints such as access, topography, and the transmission lines that run through the area that could limit, um, develop, development opportunity in the future. So, the comprehensive plan policies that we looked at, we looked at, um, the residential land use policies, economic development policies, and commercial land use policies. So, first, here are the six residential land use policies, um, we have currently in the city's comprehensive plan. So, this, um, in the analysis of these policies, the Sherwood Planning Commission finds that the rezone is inconsistent with policy number one. Um, the commission found that the medium density residential high zone provides for transition between uses. So, you have the low density residential, which is the Windham subdivision to the north, and then, um, you have the general commercial zoning along Highway 99. Um, the planning commission, um, found that the transition, um, ensures that the integrity of the community is preserved, and by removing the medium density residential high zone would remove this transitional area and make this area less compatible with the surrounding low density residential uses, um, to the north. Planning staff, um, we found that the rezone was consistent with policy number one. Um, the zone change request would change the site from medium density residential high to general commercial, and that multifamily housing is a permitted use, um, in the commercial, general commercial zone, and the community would have a opportunity to provide comments on site development through any new land use application, um, that would be permitted to the city for new development. Um, any new development application, um, to the site would be, um, processed in a way that the community would be able to provide, um, insight or provide land use comments for compatibility. Um, and then staff finds that the, that the rezone is consistent with that, with that policy one. So, policy two and three. So, planning staff finds that the proposed zone change would allow the opportunity, once again, for multifamily housing per the high density residential standards. Um, the city's current housing needs analysis, which has not been adopted, but it is a hearings-ready document, discusses the need for additional housing styles in Sherwood. Um, it also talks about different, um, tenures to ensure the availa- availability of housing to meet a growing demand for millennials and baby boomers, and those seeking, um, single-family detached, or different types of, um, housing, such as townhomes, um, and apartments. So, policy number six, um, the city, we already administer five residential housing zones, so we already are consistent with that plan policy. So, looking at the economic development policies, staff, we found that the proposal is not inconsistent with the economic development policies we have in the city's comprehensive plan. The proposal does not reduce the amount of commercially viable land throughout the city, and the site is located near customers that could benefit from future commercial uses. And any new development would be, once again, would be reviewed and evaluated through a site plan review process at the time a land use application is submitted to the city. So, consistency with the city's TSP. The proposal is consistent with the city's TSP and will not negatively impact any adjacent transportation facilities. The site was zoned general commercial when the TSP was adopted in 2014, and as such, the traffic volumes associated with these, um, general commercial uses were already analyzed and are consistent with the current city's, um, transportation systems plan. So, we looked at state land use goals and the metro urban growth management functional plan, and staff found that, um, there is consistency with state land use goals and the metro's urban growth management functional plan. The zone change is not inconsistent with goals 1, 2, 9, 10, and 12, and the city is currently in compliance with Metro Title I, um, housing capacity. So, written comments that have been received in regards to this application are summarized in your council packet this evening. Most of the comments received were related to the PUD application that has been withdrawn, but to be fully transparent, staff included all written testimony, um, that was received because this application came as, um, together in one, in one full package. So, moving on to the recommendation, the planning commission developed findings and recommends denial of the proposed zone change. Four planning commissioners voted to deny the zone change, and two voted to approve it, or to move forward with it. Planning staff recommends approval of the zone change application. Um, with that, staff recommends approval of the requested zone change, which would be accomplished through approval of the ordinance 2019-10, and staff respectfully recommends that the city council hold the first public hearing on this ordinance this evening. And that concludes my presentation.
Thanks Erica, questions for, thank you Erica, questions for Erica before we hear from the applicant?
We'll have time for questions after.
Yeah. The, um, it was originally zoned commercial 30 years ago, or when it was from the fir- when the fir- when the city first laid out its map, is when it was first zoned commercial, this parcel, correct?
Correct. And it remained so up until 2016, and then it was zoned.
That's, we'll have more questions later, maybe.
I, yeah, this is more of a question for Josh, probably. Can you clarify whether this is a quasi-judicial or a legislative decision in hearing?
That's a great question. So, under our code, this is classified as a legislative process, but under, uh, case law in Oregon, zone changes to a specific parcel are considered quasi-judicial. So, we are applying the quasi-judicial rules to this hearing, given though it's legislative under our code.
And if I can just add on to that, following the quasi-judicial process provides sort of the, the most, you know, opportunity for, for notice and due diligence, but due process, thank you, so...
Greatest outreach, the greatest...
Yeah, it's always best to err on the side of, um, due process than not.
But this was commercial 30 some years ago, was the single-family dwelling there prior to that? I mean, long, long time ago, okay.
Yeah, yep. Great. Any other questions at this point? Thanks Erica. And time for the applicant, Susan?
So, I can scroll through them if I need to. The map that shows the current split zoning.
Wrong direction. Hit the exit out. You hit, um, a function key, it'll refresh it. Can I remember which function key, function four? Ah, there's Brad.
Okay, well, let me, let me just, yeah, yeah, perfect, that one, that one's there. Okay, Susan Claus, 222-11, Southwest Pacific Highway, thank you very much, counsel. Um, this has been a long process for us. I'm not gonna make comments right now, what I wanna do is have anybody else that wants to comment, and then I wanna just kind of address everything all at once. Um, I think there may be some other people that wanna make some public comments, so I wanna reserve our time.
Okay, that's totally fine.
Do you have any questions right now?
Let's, let folks testify, that'd be great.
Thank you for that.
You bet. Uh, first, anyone like to testify in support of the application? Anyone like to testify in opposition to the application? If you're kind of in between, or whatever, you can come forward, it's okay.
If you wanna make a comment.
Come on up. Yes, I mean, we don't have to answer them, but, just to be blunt, but we'll, I'll try.
Okay.
Please, please, um, introduce yourself, um, name, address, for the record, and what...
Curly Wolfley, 17840, Southwest Hamley.
Okay.
And, um, a question is, if it's zoned commercial, like right now, there's a berm, isn't it required to have a, a separation between...
Um, the commercial zone, the commercial development standards would go into effect, and I don't know the, the setbacks, the exact setbacks off the top of my head for commercial development, it would depend on what, um, the landowner wanted to do with it under the commercial zoning.
So, I can scroll through them if I need to. The map that shows the current split zone.
Yep.
And I may want to scroll through. Can I just do the up and down key to get into? Sorry.
Wrong direction. I have to exit out. You hit a function key, it'll refresh it. Can't remember which function key, function four? Ah, there's Brad. Yes.
Okay. Well, let me, let me just- Yeah, yeah, perfect. That one, that one's there. Okay. Susan Claus, 222-111 Southwest Pacific Highway. Thank you very much, council. This has been a long process for us. I'm not going to make comments right now. What I want to do is have anybody else that wants to comment, and then I want to just kind of address everything all at once. I think there may be some other people that want to make some public comments, so I want to reserve our time.
Okay.
That's okay.
That's totally fine.
Any questions right now?
Let's let folks testify. That'd be great.
Thank you so much.
You bet. First, anyone like to testify in support of the application? Anyone like to testify in opposition to the application? If you're kind of in between or whatever, you can come forward. It's okay.
If you want to make a comment.
Come on up. Yes. I mean, we don't have to answer them, but just to be blunt, but we'll, I'll try. Please, please introduce yourself, name, address for the record and what-
Curly Wolfley, 17840 Southwest Handley.
Okay.
And a question is if it's zoned commercial, like right now, there's a berm. Isn't it required to have a separation between?
The commercial zone, the commercial development standards would go into effect, and I don't know the setbacks, the exact setbacks off the top of my head for commercial development. It would depend on what the landowner wanted to do with it under the commercial zoning. But there certainly is a setback that is required of, and I don't know the distance off the top of my head.
A hundred feet?
No, it's not a hundred feet.
Erica.
Okay, it is twenty feet, kind of above a residential building, and then the height for any new commercial development that is possibly- I was going to repeat it when she was done.
Straight on the mic is best.
It's twenty-
Thank you, Erica.
It's twenty feet from the setback-
Setback.
From the residential lot line. And then there's also a height requirement, so-
Maximum limit.
So, any, right, maximum limit. If it's, it has to be within a hundred feet of the residential development, the height has to comply with that residential zone. So, we're looking at-
So, it's thirty feet.
So, that, and that's to keep someone from putting like a three or four-story building right next to a residential area where they're looking down into the lots?
That is correct.
Awesome.
And would that include like multi?
If they did, if they did, if they did a PUD or something with, or a multifamily, so it would still be multifamily setback, and it would still have a height limitation.
Same as what it-
Oh, okay.
Am I misspeaking? Have I misspoke?
I don't think you misspoke, but I want to make sure I correctly understood. So, if it was zoned medium-density residential high, the the height standard and setback standards of the medium-density residential high would apply, and I'm not sure what that height requirement is. With the general commercial, if they were to develop it as a multifamily through a PUD or some other process-
Or a mixed-use project.
Right, then there's, they're going to be limited to those height restrictions that Erica just spoke about.
Great. And is that your only question? So, so that regardless if it was, if it was, if the zoning is approved to change to commercial, if they did a mixed-use or if they did a hundred percent commercial use, the height limitation is what Erica said for both, and the dis- and the setback from the property line is what Erica said. So, at least twenty feet and limited on height for a hundred feet from the residential zone. Regardless if it's a housing piece or a box, retail box. Anyone else like to give testimony in opposition or question? Sure. Yep, you have to, sorry, you have to come back up. It's okay. Well, I'm glad you're here safe. Driving is-
If it's zoned commercial, then will Cedar Brook, which is a residential street, or is it?
Cedar, Cedar Brook isn't, is, is not, Cedar Brook is, per the city transportation plan, is intended to traverse all the properties between the roundabout at Minekey and the roundabout that's being built by the high school in the Elks. So, that would be a-
Cedar Brook Way is going through all those properties?
Right. It's okay.
All right.
We're all friends. We're, we're very friendly.
If, if you built houses there?
Yep.
It would be like the Minekey houses, the-
Not necessarily.
Or just a straight-through shot?
Not necessarily. The unless you have an application to know, I can't speak what would be built. You have to have an application to say what, when it comes to the the TSP says that there would be, there will be a road connecting essentially the two roundabouts. There might be side streets, might be driveways, there might be parking lots, depending upon the zoning that goes in there. Sorry to be a little vague, but that's as-
My questions make sense. Good.
Okay.
And if I may, if you can fill out a blue card so that the city recorder has that, that would be fantastic.
They're not blue, Joy.
They're not blue. I'm sorry.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Anyone else like to give testimony? Okay. We will, we're still going to hear from the applicant, so the public hearing is still open, but Susan, if you'd please return. Thank you.
So, I have a few sets of comments. This is a much easier application now that was, than what was envisioned before. The only reason that we even entertained the idea of changing the zoning in the first place is because we were told that Cedar Brook Way was not on anybody's schedule register. It wasn't going to be dealt with. And so, as a result, it was up in the air. The only thing that could have possibly been developable was the back because Cedar Brook Way and our accesses, I mean, everything would would fall into play with the front part of the property. So, anyway, the logistics of that zone change were untenable. They were untenable because of the dimensional problem that resulted. We did a pre-app right after we did the zone change, and in that pre-app, Cedar Brook Way became, you know, was invoked as part of that application process. And as such, different than what we were told before, Cedar Brook Way had to, the alignment had to be identified. The identification of that alignment made a fair amount of unusual, unusable space, and then some of just the logistics of how you get those lot sizes on there. The envisioning was more than seventeen lots. The reality is it was down to twelve lots, and it was unusable because of the amount of associated infrastructure that was to go with that, plus the, with Cedar Brook Way itself. So, and then we found out after that, with those mistakes being made and it not being workable with that downzoning, that the code does not allow for a rescission, like mutual mistake. There's, there's nothing to go back like, oops, this doesn't going to, it's not going to work. Put it back because it's not going to work. And so, there's, the only process that is available to us is what? With staff, yeah, with staff guidance is to to come back, have a two-step process. And in the process of that, the effort to try to mitigate some of the impacts of Cedar Brook Way and to try to make that. So, I'll say it this way. Cedar Brook Way has been presented different ways to us over the years. The reality of where Cedar Brook Way steps off at the Doyle property, that is really what's controlling everything and ultimately was the control from the very beginning. But we were told in various situations, there was a lot of flexibility. There's not. It's going to dissect our property. So, in an effort to try to mitigate the damages, all of that kind of thing, the PUD proposal, all of that, trying to address the missing middle problems that we have in the town, you know, just, there were a lot of, there was a lot of thought, a lot of things that went into that. We're back now to, we just want our zone change. We thought we were working on something that was going to be beneficial all the way around, and it got into a big set of issues. Whatever, that's fine. So, we're asking the equivalent of a rescission, getting our zoning back, moving on from there. And one of the things that I think also happened in the planning commission hearings is I did not realize there is a huge bias at the planning commission level against small lots. That's fine. But that's more of a policy thing, I think, at the city council level, and I think that that's a discussion doesn't really, you know, I don't want to be in the middle of that thing, but I, it's something that has to go on because I think those small lots were driving the whole process because there were comments. One of the planning commissioners that voted no said that if it was strictly commercial zoning and not the small lots, it would be a yes vote. And we had, it was a four-to-two vote. We had two really new planning commissioners that the meeting before the actual first hearing, there was supposed to be a work session for PUD guidance of, hey, what Sherwood do? What are these PUDs? And that was very lightly attended, I'll put it that way. And so, so I think part of what happened in that whole process is a lot more education was needed, a lot more understanding. And that, that kind of just is what it is. And I think that in the future, it's council or whatever that policy set up for the smaller to try to get that missing middle into our town is something that there should probably be a series of work sessions. So, and I think also that it's also the same conundrum we've been fighting for years. We can't get to all of the zoning changes that we need in the zoning code until we go through that exhaustive process. But in the meantime, there are needs in our community. So, so part of, I think, the resistance is too, the planning commission said, hey, we're going to be doing the comprehensive plan review. We don't want to do something too fast, whatever. So, so those are all, you know, that's just the reality. That's just the way it all sits right now. And Jim and I are down to the point of, you know what, we don't want to mess with all of that stuff. We thought we were going to do something nice that was workable and that was actually functional to do. But now we're just requesting our zone change back to the general commercial zoning that we've had for the last thirty years. We've had general commercial uses on that property since before we've even owned it. The well driller lived on that property in the forties, the thirties. We had the people that we brought the property from in the eighties. They ran a book depository and and they did a lot of work with the Schoolastic Foundation. So, the history of that property and the nature of that property were on the highway, you know? That, and we've got deeded accesses. So, the the highest and best use of that property has been general commercial, but for this situation with Cedar Brook Way and some of the clarification that has happened with the nature of what Cedar Brook Way is, who it belongs to, does it vitiate our accesses? It doesn't. There's, there's a lot of things that in this process have kind of solidified, but it's brought us to a narrowing of the abilities of how to handle that property at this time. And so, I want, so, so we had a split decision at the planning commission level. I also wanted to share with you, as far as community involvement, we always wonder about that. Three of the neighbors, the back fencers, most of the the testimony that you have are people that are right on our back fence. And they've been, like Carol Lee that just got up here, she bought that property knowing that we had general commercial. She's always known it. She wanted twenty feet of our property for the length of her property so she could have put, so she could put a pool in, and we told her, no, you know, we weren't interested. And there's also a fifteen-foot stormwater easement that runs on the back of those fences between their properties and our property, and it's part of the PUD, and it's, it's but some of the other, one of the other applicants have built a place structure over that. So, I'm saying that everybody's kind of been liberal with their part of the ground there and tried to do what they could do to maximize what they thought. And we're the ones that have the trees that we put in there as part of a project where we were planting trees and then we were replanting trees in another location. So, so part of the outreach that happened on the Sherwood Community Site that has seven thousand members, there was a lot of talk, a lot of, like, trying to get people to come to the the initial planning commission meetings, hey, they're going to take down the trees, they're going to do this, they're going to do that. Anyway, just trying to whip up the crowd. And ultimately, you just basically got our, our people that live, some of the people, not even all of the people that live on the back fence that didn't want us to take down our trees or whatever their situations were. So, and then we've had two notices. Thank you. I didn't know who was responsible for letting everybody know that the application, the nature of the application has changed. So, there have been two notices since those planning commission hearings that we were going to have this meeting tonight, and you can see a few people showed up, only one person testified. So, you're not getting, there, there's not this big community issue. One of the guys on our back fence on the other side, who always puts his RVs on the street, he sent a flyer out to all of the neighbors and said, hey, they're going to do this with the plant, the, the parking. It's going to be terrible. It's going to be awful. He gave him a little view of it, you know, he, he worked up some kind of little plan of parking plan, and he couldn't get anybody. So, I, I'm just sharing with you the nature of the community worry about this.
And the, the significant thing that Erica addressed is if city council supports your application, anything that happens going forward, there is still a whole process.
Amen.
So that everyone can weigh in on whatever is proposed by you or someone else.
Yep, yep, absolutely. So, anyway, and then I even checked today on the Sherwood Community Facebook site. I'm not a Facebooker, but I do, you know, I'm not, I mean, I can kind of negotiate a little bit, and I saw that the police had the rooster they found, you know, and there was a pug that somebody was looking for, but there was nothing, you know what I'm saying? There was nothing like, everybody come down to the meeting, you got to stop this, you got to do that, none of that. Because the, the reality is, this property's been zoned this way for thirty years, and it's functioned this way for over sixty, seventy, how long the, the highway's been in front of it. So, and then, I mean, there, there's a few things too that I just wanted to address in the staff report. Not really that much. It's not a big staff report because it's not, the, the reversion that we're trying to do, nothing really changed. I mean-
Very straightforward.
Two, two years passed by, and we found out some more information. We found out what we could do and what we couldn't do. And it's been at a fairly expensive cost to us. So, and so, we so the few things in the staff report, I'm not even going to really, they're minimal. I don't, it's not that big of a deal. The sausage place, that building does exist. It says it wasn't built. The building does exist. There, you know, and just the fact that we've always had commercial uses. Jim and I have run businesses out of there since the eighties. And other people, we've had other tenants who've run businesses, so, so there is a variety. And I kind of went over one, one of the issues that the planning commission said is that they were looking for a zoning buffer. There's, there are inherent zoning buffers within the GC code itself, which is what you alluded to, that if, if you have different zoning abutting, and if you look on this map here, you can see that the other general commercial zones in that little district all abut up to the low-density residential housing. It's not like it wasn't contemplated. This is not something that we're trying to make this big intensity. Even Celeste and Corey, they moved in there knowing we had commercial zoning. I don't know how long Fink's been there, you know, but the point of it is, we've always run that. It's the way, the nature of our accesses are that they cover our property. They don't, nobody gets to go into our property from the neighborhood, shoot through the property or shoot through the neighborhood. Ultimately, that, it can't happen. That's not the way that our accesses function. So, that, there was, they had a problem with the intersection of Handley and Stein worrying, saying that right now, that there's a lot of people that don't stop for there or they aren't using their traffic queues, but that's- But that's, you know, that's a Jeff issue.
That's a, right, that's a city issue.
Yeah, that's a Jeff issue. So, so, and I actually think that they came and they started working that a little bit more, that intersection, because it, to me, that is a necessary intersection for the Bridges School, because there's a ton of people in the morning and at night that come along Hanley. Again, but that, that was not something that had to do with Jim and Susan and blah, blah, blah. And so, and I think that's also why you don't have people getting up again, reiterating the same thing. Because when there are site plans or whatever's going to go on there, that's the time. And so...
Yeah, the room, the room is not full in one way or the other on this.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, so, let me see what else I'm editing as we go along here. You never know what's going to happen on any meeting you go to. Let's see. So, so the other thing that I just kind of wanted to address is that you are the ultimate keepers of the city goals and what are we doing, what are we going for? And I looked at your new council goals and, I mean, it's the same thing that we've been talking about forever. We have a crazy problem with affordable housing, attainable housing, we have a crazy problem with. And we also have a problem, your goal one for the economic development is striving for a balance in the tax base. This just puts it back in general commercial and puts maybe the possibility of being able to do something, you know, when, when, with those crazy dimensions that because of the bisecting of the road, hey, you know, smarter people than me, you know, that's one of those things that we've tried so many different things of, how do you do everything? And it's, it's just a complicated set of problems. And so, and I think also with, with the council, you guys are also tasked with forward thinking of, you know, what are we going to do in that district? That district's been holed up and it's in play because of the school. But it also, you need to look at the critical mass that's out there and the, the possibilities. And, and part of what's always been envisioned there is putting a signal in. That requires an application with the city, it has to be the city initiated, but you really need to look at that district and see how the functionality of that goes with the newness of the school district and how really that you can make those parcels work, given the constraints and given, you know, because again, we don't have much commercial zoning left. We have to be very thoughtful about, about what we do. And, and, you know, Jim is very, very passionate, as you know. This is one of those things that, one of the things that the staff report said is that the letter from our doctor about Jim didn't apply to this hearing. And only something like that could be said by someone that doesn't understand what truly significant medical problems are and how they impact not only the individual but the family and even our ability to work in the community. And, and it, it, it's too stressful, you know? We've been here too long. Some of this to me is a no-brainer. It's turned into a little bit of a fiasco that I'm just asking for council wisdom and council looking at the big picture, seeing what we can do here. And like when the development code is flawed, we've got to do something. I mean, you got to meet the people halfway. Would I have known? I mean, there's no way hindsight, all of this stuff, it's hard, but it's a reality that you have to trust what you're being told by staff people. And maybe that's what they thought at the time, whatever, whatever. I'm not even going to assign anything to it. But when there are very heavy impacts that result from misinformation, wrong information, whatever, whatever, let's figure it out. And if we can put a rescission mechanism into our code so somebody doesn't have to spend tens of thousands of dollars when they're still trying to put their kids through college, you know, more power to us as a community to make it work. And, you know, and that goes along with the, there was also a, a statement in there, what's the financial impact of this? And it says zero. And I'm sitting there, you, you know, you're just on the wrong side of the table. There's a huge impact, but...
It just goes to that criteria and the specific part of the code and so you understand that.
Yeah, yeah, I do, I do, but...
But yes, there are two sides of every coin, absolutely.
Yeah. And so I'm asking, not only, I mean, this process has been long, but I'm also asking council, if you come up with, if council has the ability to not extend this further if, if there's a unanimous vote of the sitting council, and I'm just asking you, if, if it's unanimous, we couldn't, we got one person generated here, if there's any way we can settle this tonight, please thank you, a thousand thank yous. And if the council has any questions for me?
Questions for Susan?
Okay, good.
Thank you, Susan.
All right, thank you.
All right. With that, we will close the public hearing portion of this ordinance for tonight. And Erica, I want to return to the table, if you have a chance. Questions of Erica?
Just one quick question, just to clarify something that the applicant said. Can you show on the map where the Doyle property was, just so we can visualize where that is? I think it's probably included in one of the slides you had.
It's to the, it's, it's on the map, it's to the right of the black star. It's, it's...
There was a better map. That one.
So the wedge, kind of?
It's, it's to the right of the subject property.
Triangle.
That little wedge, the little red triangle, okay. Thanks, just wanted to... Yep, perfect, thank you. That's all I had.
Side of question. So, you mentioned under the, with the staff recommendation, looking at the rezoning this back to commercial and the transportation plan, that it's, that it is consistent with that, does, does that transportation plan assume the extension of, sorry, the, the road that we call it, the frontage road, Cedar Brook?
The non-frontage road?
Oh, the non-frontage road, yeah.
There is, the, the TSP does indicate a road to traverse those properties.
So, so the analysis that was done assumes that road is there? Okay.
We don't have this. There's not a slide that shows that, Cedar Brook?
No, because it's not...
Applicable.
Okay.
And on the, on the TSP, it is a dashed line. It is not a solid line.
It hasn't been certainly located yet, right?
Right.
I had a question, and I heard a lot of talk about this when I was watching the planning commission, and I'm still a little unclear. It says, "The rezone to general commercial allows for multifamily housing subject to the dimensional requirements of the high-density residential zone when located on the upper floors in the rear or otherwise clearly secondary to commercial buildings." Can you explain the clearly secondary to commercial buildings? Does that mean the commercial buildings already need to be there and then we can allow the, the high-density residential or...
So, for her, it's probably important to know what page of the staff report you're referring to and if it's in connection with the...
It is page 184 of the staff report.
I, I can answer.
Under policy one.
I can answer the question just because it's in the code. I believe there is a footnote in our development code that defines what clearly secondary is and it's related to the trip generation of the commercial use versus the residential use.
So, there doesn't necessarily need to be actually any commercial buildings built yet before they can put in the, somebody can put in a high...
The planning commission discussed that issue at some length.
Which is why I'm still confused.
That is not crystal clear in our code.
Okay.
It, it could possibly be interpreted in either, either way.
So, I still leave here confused.
But, yeah, but for here, the, that's not what we're being asked of today.
Right.
Well, we're not being asked of it, but if it's, if it's rezoned back to general commercial, they could put in the...
They could make an application and do a PUD application.
And go through the site plan, yeah.
It doesn't even require a PUD, I don't believe it's a condition. But for the multifamily, I can't remember.
I thought it did require.
The multifamily, it's, it's permitted through the high-density residential standards.
So, what it would require is an interpretation when a site plan application is submitted of whomever to say, we don't think that's what that clearly, clearly secondary is, and then that would potentially be appealable to the council.
At the time, that all happens, okay.
Yep, yep, yep. Other questions of Erica, or Stan?
This gets into the hypothetical futures, but the reason I ask about the transportation plan and the, and the road in question is if, if a commercial applicant came along down the road, say, two years from now, and they wanted to have hypothetical, commercial traffic feeding that from the residential area, that would not comply with the transportation plan, is that correct?
So, if there was a, so, if there was a connection from the residential portion to the commercial site, and if that commercial site had access to 99, then an application would have to be made to ODOT from the city to allow, you know, the, the traffic from the residential portion, portion to have access to 99. So, there's a process.
I, I think the question, sorry if I'm wrong here, I think the question is more of, the concern, I think, is that the, the commercial portion that's currently residential, if it's rezoned commercial, if there's a commercial development in that area, so it's essentially on the other side of Cedar Brook Way, the concern is about traffic potentially coming through the existing residential neighborhoods into that backside of the commercial area prior to Cedar Brook.
So, there, so there is, so it is hypothetical, you can't act on a hypothetical, unfortunately. That's just a fact. The, when a future application comes forward, it has to adhere to our TSP, which says there has to be this connection. It has to adhere to whatever ODOT rules on access to 99. So, it's, it's complex for sure, but...
Well, and the, the reason I asked that question was more for residents that may be watching, that if, if an application came down the road, all that stuff has to be considered and, and the transportation plan's going to be looked at and...
They can't just have cart block access through the residential neighborhood into the back of the commercial zone, it doesn't potentially go back to commercial.
And it would be all reviewed and looked at at the time of the land use application for any new development.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I just, and that's why I was asking a question, I just wanted to be really clear, because I don't want people walking away thinking all of a sudden there's going to be a, I don't know, big box retailer there and all the traffic coming in through the neighborhood.
Because when we talk about deeded access from 99, I think that's what we said, right? Deeded access? In one of the emails I read today, too, does that mean if they put something commercial there, they can in and out off 99? They have that right?
So, it's really important to know that it's, that's ODOT deeded access. And so, ODOT will regulate what they can and can't do. It is, it is our understanding that they do have deeded access, but if they come in for a development application, they will need to work with ODOT to, to upgrade that deeded access, but that's not, the city, where the city isn't really involved in that decision, it's ODOT involved in that decision.
Right. As part of any land use application, they have to get ODOT sign off on whatever their plan is anyway, so that would be part of that process. But the city wouldn't rule on it at all, yeah.
And then they're, and we would have a, a big public process for whatever is proposed.
Yeah, the concern that I saw a lot of in the, the letters that were written was about parking. Was that more, when, it was more of a PUD?
Yep.
Okay, so with this proposal that, that's on the table tonight, parking's not... Okay.
There is no need for parking because there's no land use development action. Great question. Other questions? All right. For me, I think it's, it's straightforward, it's reverting it to what it was for decades. We have a, we'll have a big, if it, council supports it, we'll have a big process to consider whatever is proposed in the future and let everyone weigh in on their opinion as well. When I first learned of the zone change without knowing the details, I was a little puzzled, quite, quite honestly. So, I'm fully in support of, of the application that we have before us. Other comments from council on the application? Do we, the applicant? If there is general support, the applicant would love to have it wrapped up tonight. We, we, we have a second reading scheduled for the first meeting in October.
I have something to add. So, I think there's a lot of concerns and justifiably so around potential parking in that neighborhood, potential traffic through the existing neighborhoods, what might be built there and how it might contrast or not to the existing houses in the area, and I think all of those are legitimate, legitimate concerns. I actually think, as crazy as this sounds, restoring this to a single zone and allowing the entire property to be planned as one parcel is actually going to help solve those problems in a better way than the current zoning was. What, in the current zoning right now, they can develop that residential area in the back in, in a number of different ways. That may not be the best ways for the, in the long term. And I'm not, I don't know what they're planning on doing, I'm just saying, I'm speculating, that it could be developed because it's, it's split, they could develop that residential portion only, but it's not going to have Cedar Brook Way, it's not going to have whatever's in front of, in between Cedar Brook Way and 99. It's just going to be that residential zone and it's very, it may not be the best possible solution. Restoring the zoning to one zone and being able to develop the entire six, whatever acres it is, as one property is probably going to allow for the best possible use that fits in with the neighborhood and actually solves some of the traffic and, and parking problems that may otherwise happen if they stay with the current, if we stay with the current zone. That's one read I have on it.
I, I, just amplify that a little bit, I agree completely with that. I also think that, I'm getting back to the vision of the council and, you know, our desire to develop more commercial industrial land in this, in our city and get our tax base in balance. We're heavily residential at this point, it makes sense as far as that goes, in terms of what our direction is. So, I would be in support as well.
Yeah, I think getting back to one, one zone, I kind of scratched my head that we split zoned one piece two years ago, but after reading some of the back history and understanding why that was done. So, I, I do think, and I think the concern that maybe some of the planning commissioners had that voted no was the small lot sizes of what else, whatever might, could possibly get put in there. Again, that would be another process beyond this rezoning.
Yeah, and from, you know, you, I'm sure the clauses have had lots of ideas over the years of what they would love it to be developed into and the potential of what could be done on the front and very high visibility, highly attractive locations for restaurants, stores, shops, the back, that might not need the same kind of visibility but a destination kind of spot, some, some, just thinking out, thinking out there. But other comments of council?
I think I'm always the one who says, you know, I'm always a big proponent of two hearings to give time for public to have all the time possible, but I think this has been going on through planning since April?
April.
April. They had two public hearings, we've received comment, there's a handful of people here, I'm not sure. I'm usually proponent of one hearing, but if council would like to go in other direction, that'd be fine.
Other thoughts of council members?
I'm okay with going with one hearing.
I have no concerns.
I agree.
Would someone like to then make a...
Mr. Mayor, if council's going to adopt in one hearing, I would point out that it does say on the last page of the resolu, of the ordinance, page 175 in your packet, passed by council this first day of October 2019, should probably amend that to say third day of September 2019, the day that you're actually passing it.
Yes.
So would someone like to make a motion to change the date of the last page of the ordinance?
I make a motion to change the date from the first day of October to the third day of September 2019.
Second?
All questions of the motion, all in favor of amending the text of the motion as suggested or made by Kim? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we now have an amended ordinance. If someone want to do the honors of the move to read caption and something, something.
Would that be the, on page 174?
That title correct. Yes.
Okay. I move that we recaption and adopt ordinance 2019-010 regarding a zone change application for Washington County map and tax lot number
Second.
As amended?
As amended.
Second.
Sylvia?
Ordinance 2019-010 regarding a zone change application for Washington County map and tax lot number 2S131BA2000. Counselor Scott?
Aye.
There's a four in there somewhere, just for the record.
On the agenda, there's a four in there, but I don't know if it's in the actual-
Oh, is it typo on the-
Is there a typo on the agenda?
Ah. Well, we understand the, what is the tax lot?
Read correctly, I think.
Is there a four in the tax lot number?
Which is it?
Okay, so it was-
Oh, it's red, right?
Read correctly.
Perfect. On my agenda for all.
You can continue. Counselor Scott, you voted aye, please?
You did. I did, aye.
Counselor Griffin?
Aye.
Counselor Brous?
Aye.
Counselor Young?
Aye.
Counselor Garland?
Aye.
Counselor President Rosner?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sylvia, thank you, Erica. You're very welcome. Go develop, or whatever, you know, plan, go plan. Next on our agenda is city manager report.
Mayor and council, uh, I have two items, um, and then available for any questions you might have. Citizens University, the enrollment period is supposed to close this Friday, I may extend it for a week. We've only gotten one application so far.
Ooh.
And, uh-
Hustle bustle of getting back to school and-
Yeah, so I'm going to do some more marketing and try to drum up support. We've always said that to make it feasible for the amount of staff time that goes into this, we kind of want 10 or more. So, um, if you know folks among your own circles that-
I do.
Are interested in this, please encourage them to submit an application. And it is the first week of school and things are busy and things like that, so I know people get, get busy. So I want to put a plug in for that. The other thing is your next meeting on September 17th, right now you have just two work sessions, there are no business items. So unless something happens in the next week that is pressing, um, you will not have a regular business meeting that night, you'll just have the two work sessions. Council President Rosner will be running that meeting, Mayor Mays will be unavailable on the 17th, so I just want to let folks know, unless something changes, it'll just be two work sessions. Any questions for myself or the department heads that are here on anything?
So, you're taking some time off between now and then?
Yes, so next week I will be off Wednesday, Thursday, Friday because on September 14th I'm getting married, as many of you know.
What?
I'm a little surprised, so-
Congratulations in advance. Assuming you don't get cold feet.
Don't we need to pass like a resolution allowing you to do that or something?
Proclamation.
Are there going to be more than 100 people at your gathering?
No, so no special event permit.
Okay. Are you going to close the street?
It's on the public beach, so we don't even have to get a permit from the state of Oregon because it's the wonderful public beach that we have here in our, in our state, so yes, thank you.
Congratulations.
Other questions, comments for Joe or his team? Council announcements, who'd like to announce something?
I'll go. Before somebody steals my thunder, so. Parks and Rec meeting, um, the ninth, it was moved because it was, you know, it was yesterday, but it's on the night, 7:00 PM, always fun, great time here in this room. The Sherwood-Robinhood Festival Association, uh, they have their next meeting on the 19th, it's at the Masonic Lodge, they're planning the Winter Festival, which is December 7th. So they always like volunteers and you can still get some, some word in on what happens. Uh, and that will be 4 to 6, 6:15 PM. Carolers, dining, shopping, all kinds of fun stuff that day, it's always a great festival. Uh, and the skate park. Yeah, grand opening, uh, 12 to 2 on the 14th, should be fun. I hear the mayor's going to be doing some demo. What's that called, gr, grinding, is it grinding?
Watch me roll, man.
What's that called?
Piking?
Piking, grinding, whatever he's going to do, it's going to be-
Rolling, crawling, breaking things.
It's going to be great.
But not your bike.
Yeah, but not your bike, no bicycles, thank you, that's it.
All right, we're going on the road?
Sure.
All right. Uh, police advisory board was last week, it was a very short meeting. Chief was unavailable, but we had good discussions, but the main item on the agenda that night was the traffic safety committee draft, and that got postponed. Just so Chief, I believe you can be there and help present that, and that will soon come to council. Okay. October 15th, we'll be having a work session on what the police advisory board recommends, all right. Uh, and as for the YMCA, my other liaison, um, this month of September, there's, there's no joining fee for new members, so if you've been considering joining the YMCA, so good month to do that. They're currently been doing some facility upgrades and those will be finished as of September 9th, so they'll be getting back into full swing. Also, they're starting a new program or revitalizing, reliving, re, re, uh, I don't know what the word is, bringing back a program. Renewing, thank you, um, called the Y Adventure Guides. And it's, the Adventure Guides program launches fathers and their children, but it doesn't have to be fathers and their children, we live in a world where it could be any guardian, anybody with influence and a child. And their children on a journey of friendship and discovery with the child as the explorer and the parent guardian slash whatnot as the guide. Games, crafts, songs, stories, ceremonies, outdoor pursuits such as camping, hiking, and swimming. The informational meeting kickoff is September 17th at 6:30, that sounds like it's going to be a great, great thing. Also, they have their bus up and running, that they receive the community enhancement program-
Saw a photo.
Grant from us and Metro. So that's up and running and it is going to be picking up students from both middle schools after school and bringing them to the teen center and so that is really exciting, I'm so glad they have a bus that they, they can do that. So, that's it for me.
Awesome, awesome.
So I have a couple of things, um, we had a school board meeting last month. They were kicking off their new year, which is always a fun meeting to be at, we have a new principal of high school who's there and a new assistant principal. They both, um, early indications are they're rock stars, so I think we're really fortunate to get them. They also, it was, this is interesting, I had no idea that the school systems across the country do this, but they have a bus drivers rodeo.
Yeah.
And, um, yeah, oh yeah, it's a big thing, and they, they compete at the regional level, the state level, and the national level.
So do they, are they strapped on the front of the, of the bus, or are they strapped on the back on the top of the bus, where, where do they hang on?
I'm not sure, but they are looking for volunteers for unruly passengers if you're interested. But, just kidding. But anyways, um, we have amazing bus drivers, um, in almost every category, our drivers replacing for second or third at state, and we had a couple drivers go to the national level and one placed sixth in the nation.
Because they're so safe or so-
I don't know what the criteria is, but I'm assuming it's safety, but I'm assuming it's safety, but it is a pretty cool thing and they brought them all in and they had all their trophies, and the trophies are big, they're like three, four-foot-high trophies, it was awesome. Last thing I'll mention, we had a historical society meeting, um, at the end of the month in August. Most of that meeting, uh, revolved around the, uh, their efforts to raise money at the, uh, Music on the Green event, for those that you don't know, they're the, they, they sell the beer and the wine, so. Um, and they had a pretty good year this year, not as big as some of the other years they've done, but they've, that's their main fundraising event to raise money for the museum over there. And the, the new roof is on, the painting was finishing up when I was there, the building looks great. And thanks to the staff for helping out with that, and, uh, that's all I got.
Awesome, Renee?
Didn't really have anything, but then I thought of a few things, so Chamber of Commerce meets this coming Tuesday, which would be the 10th at the Refuge at 7:15 in the morning, for those who'd like to attend, we're doing a road show, it sounds like, for the next several meetings. The Rotary Club of Sherwood, peace, this is peace month, and there's a peace walk and all kinds of peace opportunities on the 21st of September to become a part of that, I think it starts at 10 o'clock, I think they're doing a dedication for a peace pole at Allstate Insurance, so they're on Sherwood Boulevard and all that corner there. And, I think that's about it, except for I'm leaving for Columbia next Wednesday and I'll be gone until the 19th. So I will not be at the work session.
Safe travels, have fun down there.
Uh, just a few things, wanted to thank Mayor Mays and Councilor Griffin, joining me last Saturday for our Adopt a Road cleanup, cleaning up the street out in front of the, uh, middle school and Hopkins, and had a couple other citizens reach out to me who also responded to a Facebook post I put out there that just did some walking around the neighborhoods with some trash bags and some gloves, so, while the weather's still nice before the rain comes, I'd like to, uh, extend that invitation to other people, just get out and pick up a little bit of trash around our neighborhood, make it look nice for the kids. A little plug in for the Sherwood 2040org.org site, uh, we talked about comprehensive plans a little bit tonight, so they are always running some surveys or have some questions on their social media site. So follow them on Facebook, if you're on social media, check out their website, there's always surveys, so get involved that way, and the other thing is, the Sherwood Police Department is having their 11th annual blood drive on Wednesday, September 11th, from 8:00 AM to 6:30 PM, it's the 11th annual, like I said. So everybody loves their superhero Marvel movies, saving lives. Donate blood, save three lives, up to three lives, so you can literally save somebody's life if you donate blood, so please do that, it doesn't take too much time. The volunteers are always super friendly at the police station, they run a tight ship there. I don't know if they've got a goal this year or not, I know in years past, I think it's been like 100 units or something, so let's see if we can break some records this year, that's all I've got.
Awesome.
What's that? Hundred?
The goal is always a new record.
Let's do it.
And Doug?
Don't have too much tonight, first of all, I'd like to apologize to the dozens and dozens of you who might have showed up last week for planning commission, only to find that it didn't actually, there was no planning commission meeting, it got canceled, so, or was pre-canceled, and there was no agenda, so it didn't happen. So I apologize, so don't come again next week for planning commission because it also isn't happening, so hopefully they'll be back the following, three Tuesdays from now, the 24th, with their, with their next, their next planning commission meeting. Also, school's back in session, uh, and I know Sean said this last meeting, I'll take my turn to say at this meeting, bikers, walkers, um, you know, kids, kids are going to be out and about, so be careful, slow down, not just in the school zones, but even in the neighborhoods leading up to the school zones, because there's going to be a lot of kids crossing the street. I'd also encourage people to maybe send more of your kids on our super-safe school buses and less of you driving your kid to school, because that does create a lot of traffic congestion, which is also more dangerous for kids and, and adults alike, so, um, yeah, just be extra, extra cautious out there in the crossings and everywhere else, thank you.
Awesome, thanks. Had a chance, I was back east and I spent a day lobbying on the path of the community, um, in, um, DC with agencies and our representatives. The, the representatives were all back here, so it was just with staff and so much more casual, so much faster, I mean, love meeting with members, but, one member staffer even brought their dog to work with them. So that was, it was a nice change of pace, lines were short, getting in and out of the buildings. It was hot, muggy, gross, weather-wise, but, um, it was productive because truth be told, staff do all the work. So it was great to spend a day with some meetings to advocate on our behalf, on some things. Last week had a chance to join our county chambers, Hillsborough Chamber hosted a breakfast for Senator Wyden, which was great. Julie was able to go, our chamber, um, CEO, Cory was able to attend as well. I think that was all that we got. Then, um, later that day, joined the senator with a few others, um, at a roundtable conversation at Virginia Garcia Clinic to talk about, just different challenges in getting, um, care these days. So that was, that was good to connect with, with the senator and, um, the other electeds and community members that were there. I apologize, I will miss our next work sessions, but like, um, Renee, I'll be out of town, um, but, um, I will get caught up on everything after the fact, so. School is in session, Sean, I want to thank you for reminding us to get out, um, and clean, um, our street, the Sherwood Boulevard before classes started. I was a little surprised, but then my niece reminded me not to be surprised, the number of Dutch brothers and McDonald's cups that were in the planner boxes in front of the two schools, it was like a magnet.
We had to climb in there to dig them out, there were so many. I'm not kidding.
And I'm quite confident city staff and school district staff cleaned it out on a regular basis, but two days before classes started, that was, that was well timed, and I got warmed up on that, uh, because, uh, Rotary, which many of us are Rotary, Sherwood Rotary Rotarians, we had, uh, our street cleaned up at 8 o'clock that morning, so we went out and cleaned up another street, so I got refreshed on just how to do it, and then I went out there with Sean and Russell, so that was great. We still have people that smoke, by the way, because it was clear in our community, so hopefully more and more people will be get off that habit, but I digress. Anything else for the good of the order? With that, it is 8:30 and we are adjourned.